I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting.
I'd be happy to. Commissioners present and establishing a quorum. Commissioners Blair, Balk, Lockhart, Lowe, Petrino, and Walsh. Commissioner Dawkins is excused.
On, uh, we, uh, call it four point two, uh, right before this. But move forward to point one, comments. You can not find any numbers of the public here to comment this evening. So move on to agenda nine, four point one, which is a report of this current second point one pile. The motion.
So remember to approve, is it better to second, second five than what you do?
Thank you, Commissioner Balk for the motion. Mr. Second, thank Commissioner Blair for the second. All we were say F.
Right.
Motion passed. We will move on to, uh, twenty twenty five Human Services Community Assessment. And I will present it by.
Good evening, everyone. Just gonna share my screen with you all. Okay. Thank you. My name is Caitlin and I'm the Human Services Consultant and I work with Rachel Adams over here. Um, and today we'll be presenting on the, um, needs assessment that we conducted, um, starting in May of this year. Um, so this assessment, um, was first done in twenty twenty one, um, where we were trying to look at our, um, Sky Valley community and assess, um, resident services and to kind of figure out where some of the gaps and needs and barriers are in the community to accessing services. Um, so this report, um, looked at both primary and secondary data. Um, the quantitative data for primary collection was through a resident survey and through key informant interviews and focus groups, um, for the qualitative data collection. Um, secondary data sources, um, were from federal, state, and county, um, reports and, um, publicly available sources like census data and others. Uh, as you can see, this was our timeline that began in May twenty twenty five and, um, we concluded with a final report presentation to city council in September. And, um, the report was adopted, um, through resolution on, um, the most recent city council meeting. For our survey, we were able to include two hundred and eighty-nine responses. Um, this was an increase from the twenty twenty one needs assessment and achieved our ninety-five percent confidence interval for representativeness of the Sky Valley area. This was open to, um, all residents who lived within the, um, Monroe, Snohomish, Gold Bar, and Sultan zip code areas. Uh, for outreach for our survey, which was both, um, through a, um, Survey Monkey website as well as, um, there were some paper copies of the survey that people could have as well. We were present at a lot of, um, community, uh, events such as Pride, Juneteenth, the farmer's market, the Sultan shindig, um, tabling at the library to, um, help with outreach for this community survey. For our key informant interviews and focus groups, we had eighteen interviews from thirteen different organizations as well as twenty-five, um, participants across six different focus groups. Um, these groups were identified as being vulnerable subsets of the population in our first needs assessment. Um, so that would be youth, people with disabilities, unhoused population, Hispanic Latino, seniors, and LGBTQ plus. So for this, um, Sky Valley population, this table just, um, shows the breakdown of the different populations by area within the Sky Valley region and compares the, um, actual population of the area to our survey responses. As you can see on the far right, um, our survey responses were a little bit heavier from, um, Monroe respondents, um, but also had, um, pretty good representation as well from, um, index and, um, some from Gold Bar and Sultan too. For our area, um, some interesting, uh, demographic characteristics. Um, this area has, has, uh, experienced a large increase of population, um, compared to the, um, the state and the nation overall. Um, this gives a, a breakdown of different demographics based on age and race ethnicity and compares the actual population to our survey data. Some key differences to point out is that there were, um, a, there was a lower percentage of respondents who were, um, younger than age thirty-five than there are in the actual population. And we had, um, less responses from, um, the Asian and Pacific Islander population as well. Uh, we did have targeted outreach to our, um, Spanish-speaking and Hispanic Latino population, which helped us achieve representativeness for our area. Um, some key statistics about our area is that, um, uh, nearly thirty-two percent of the residents ha- have limited English proficiency in the Sky Valley area. This is something that is, um, a key difference from the county, state, and nation. It's much higher. Um, those other statistics that are on the side there, most of them are pretty consistent across the county and the state overall, um, except for the households with families. Um, this area has a higher percentage of households with families comparatively speaking. So looking at employment and education, um, the labor force participation rate in our area is a little bit lower than in other areas around us. Um, primarily, this looks at not just people who are unemployed, but it's this, this percentage is reflective of, um, or does not account for people who are also, um, retired or stay-at-home parents or, um, have a disability and they don't work for that reason. Um, the unemployment rate, um, in Monroe and Sultan is about the same as the county overall, um, but it is a bit higher in Gold Bar and Index. Um, this, uh, employment, this, um, pie chart that you can see on your right is, um, from the survey question itself and kind of shows the breakdown of some of the answers, um, about employment. And it's, um, somewhat reflective of the actual population as well with that labor force participation rate. Um, nearly ten percent, um, of residents in the Sky Valley lack a high school diploma and this is much higher among Hispanic Latino residents. And both of those, um, percentages are higher than the county, state, and nation. Also, twenty-seven percent have a bachelor's degree or higher, which is much less, um, than surrounding regions as well. So it kind of gives you a picture of educational attainment in our area. Some key primary findings from the survey. Um, there were five, um, statements that were, um, value statements that people could say whether they strongly agreed, agreed, disagreed with, um, and one of them was there is economic opportunity in Sky Valley. This was the only one of the five value statements that did not have a majority of people agreeing with this statement. Only thirty-two percent agreed with that statement. Lack of jobs paying a living wage ranked very high among the perceived causes of poverty in our area. And, um, some of the, um, data from our focus groups had said that there's, um, a desire for more opportunities for young people to have educational, um, opportunities outside of school as well as having, um, English classes that were, um, geared towards Spanish-speaking individuals to learn English. This gives a breakdown of the, um, income of our area. On the table here, you can see, um, broken down by different AMI categories. Um, and you can see the, um, actual percentage of the population in that middle, uh, column as well as what the responses were from the survey. So there was a bit higher of survey responses from people who are in the extremely low-income category. Um, this was partly due to our outreach efforts, trying to hear more from our low-income neighbors and going to a certain resource centers and things like that. But otherwise, a lot of the, um, income categories were very similar across the board. Um, part of the survey, over twenty percent of respondents reported that their paychecks did not cover their basic living expenses. And, um, thirty-four percent said that they were unable to put money into savings or retirement. So I'm going to go over these different categories briefly to, um, explain how we kind of got to these as kind of our top needs, um, from the community. But I just wanted to briefly, um, outline the different topics that'll be covered. I'm going to be going through the slides kind of quickly because we don't have as much time, but I encourage you, the, um, full slides, um, and the report are included in the packet. If you have any questions, you can feel free to reach out to us if you have any more specific ones because I know this will kind of be really quick because I don't want to talk too long. I could definitely talk for a very long time about all the stuff that we found, so. Uh, starting with housing, um, in terms of cost burden, um, the data says that, um, around thirty-seven percent of owners with a mortgage and forty-two percent of renters in our area are housing cost burdened. This is defined as spending more than thirty percent of your income on housing costs. Um, according to the survey, however, this number was much higher. Um, the pie chart that you can see there on the right, um, is the question regarding how much of your income that you spend on housing. The green is the people who spend less than thirty percent of their income on housing. The orange is between thirty and fifty percent. And the red was people who said that they were extremely cost burdened or spending more than half of their income on housing costs. An interesting finding is that of the blue percentage who said that they were unsure, that was a common response under our, from our, um, unhoused residents. So there's, that's not even reflective necessarily of our unhoused population who is feeling the housing cost burden. Um, less than thirteen percent of housing units in Sky Valley are affordable to sixty percent of AMI. So an example for a three-person household in the area is about eighty-four thousand. Um, that's sixty percent AMI and only thirteen percent of housing units in the Sky Valley region are affordable at that level. Some key, um, findings, um, from the survey and focus groups. Um, twenty-five percent of respondents were afraid of losing their home in the past year. Um, it also ranked high as a perceived cause of poverty, lack of affordable housing. And, um, this, uh, topic of housing came up across every single focus group that we had, um, in significant ways. Um, a lot of the details, um, from the, um, seniors focus group and the people with disabilities were talking about not having adequate housing that was, um, friendly for disabilities or, um, affordable for seniors. Um, and then also a lack of group homes and long-term care facilities. And, um, among our unhoused population, there was a concern that there's not a good place to go during the daytime, um, especially during times of extreme weather, either weather, heat or cold, that they can go to shelter from the elements. In terms of emergency housing and homelessness, um, there are limited shelter options in, um, Sky Valley area specifically. Um, sixteen beds at the Monroe Gospel Women's Mission, eight beds at Cocoon House, which is for youth, um, under the age of eighteen. Um, and the cold weather shelter, which only operates, um, seasonally from November into March. Um, according to the comprehensive plan, there's a, needed a hundred and thirty-seven emergency, um, units that, um, are needed. And, um, this is only just within the city of Monroe, not even looking at the entire Sky Valley area. Um, this graphic that you can see was provided from Snohomish County from the most recent point-in-time count, which is where volunteers go out on one day of the year to, um, actually count the people who are experiencing homelessness at one time. Um, this number was, um, very similar to years past. Um, there were a bit more people who were, um, sheltered homelessness than there have been in the past. Typically, that is often due to weather conditions, um, at the time of the count. Um, in terms of the Sky Valley area, which is, um, in the data as the Highway Two corridor, um, at the time of the count, there were thirty-nine people who were sheltered and unh- uh, and unhoused, um, and sorry, unsheltered and unhoused, and twenty-seven that were sheltered. Moving on to the topic of mental and behavioral health, um, some of the statistics that I found that were, um, significantly different than the county, state, and nation are that, um, a large number of, um, adults in Sky Valley, um, report feeling socially isolated. Um, twenty-six percent diagnosed with depression and seventeen percent that experience frequent mental distress. Um, all three of those figures are, are higher compared to the state overall and the nation. According to the Healthy Youth Survey, which is a survey that's administered, um, to schools all over the state, um, most of the metrics, um, that they've found are improving and doing really well in our community, but there were a few concerns, um, one of which is there, they were seeing an increase in suicide attempts among eighth graders. Um, as you can see, the table in the bottom left, um, shows that the, um, rate of suicide attempts was at nine point five percent and that was a significant increase, um, from the prior Healthy Youth Survey. Um, uncontrolled worrying was also at its highest recorded ever among high school seniors, which is one of their, um, measurement markers for, um, anxiety. Uh, in the top right corner, you can see the table that looks at the rate of mental health providers in our area. As you can see, the rate of a hundred and, about a hundred and twenty-two per one hundred thousand is, um, much lower than, um, in the, uh, county, state, and nation. Uh, even more so limited for providers that accept Medicare and Medicaid. Um, that's one of the largest barriers, barriers to receiving care is not only lack, the lack of providers, but the lack of insurance coverage. Um, among behaviors, people in Sky Valley need to know more information about. This was one of the questions on the survey. The top response was mental health and the second highest response was stress management, which is also very closely related. Uh, nearly thirty percent of survey respondents said that they felt sad or worried enough in the past month that it impacted their ability to go about their usual daily activities. And, um, this topic was also frequently reported about, um, especially in the, um, focus groups for people with disabilities, um, who are Hispanic Latino or in the LGBTQ plus focus groups. Um, and it was, uh, primarily due to lack of access and, and number of providers. Um, closely and o- often co-occurring with, um, sub- with behavioral health is substance use. Um, the rate of opioid overdose, um, increased sharply in twenty twenty-three and has continued to stay high in Snohomish County. However, you can see in, um, the graphic on the right side there in the box, um, is the Sky Valley region specifically and the rates are higher in the Sultan, Gold Bar, and Index, um, zip code areas compared to, um, Monroe and Snohomish. Uh, many, uh, Medicaid plans are not accepted for inpatient care locally, so there's a lot of, um, lack of options for inpatient care. However, we have, uh, improved since the twenty twenty-one needs assessment on the, um, availability of, um, outpatient medical assisted treatment options. Uh, according to Healthy Youth Survey, less than one percent of students report regular fentanyl use. However, because this is a voluntary, um, survey, sometimes there can be a lower reporting rate, um, for, um, certain things, especially when it comes to actual drug use. Um, among the youth, um, focus group, there was, uh, somewhat of a consensus that they felt that there was a, um, problem with drug use at school. Um, substance use disorder was ranked as the third highest choice for behaviors that the community needs more information about and also ranked high among the perceived causes of poverty. Um, a top barrier when asked, um, for those who responded that they had trouble, um, finding substance use treatment locally, the top barrier that they, um, responded with was that they didn't know where to go. Moving on to, um, health and dental care access. Similarly to, um, mental health and behavioral health care, there is a, um, lower rate of providers, um, compared to the county, state, and nation in our area. Um, many of the, um, people in our region live in a dental health professional shortage area and also a primary care shortage area. And that just kind of looks at your proximity to, um, a number of providers, which basically just means that most people who live in the Sky Valley area are having to travel much further to get their dental care and their, um, primary care services. Um, interestingly, the rate of obesity is higher in, um, Sky Valley area compared to the county, state, and the nation at thirty-five percent among adults. And also, poor dental health among seniors was also a significant, um, difference in the findings. According to the survey, twenty-two percent of people had trouble accessing primary care. Um, the primary barriers, excuse me, to receiving care were that the wait times were too long, um, that they couldn't find an available provider, or that the appointment times don't work for their schedules. Um, and, uh, very interestingly, almost thirty-nine percent, um, reported that they had physical pain in the past month that made it difficult to perform usual daily activities. Um, in terms of the barriers to receiving dental care, um, the top response was that they cannot afford these services or that they don't know where to go. Um, and then the wait times are too long, similar to primary care. Um, Hispanic Latino residents were more frequently reporting, um, having difficulty accessing much of this care, especially dental, primary care, and OB-GYN. Um, for seniors and people with disabilities, um, much of their reporting from focus groups was focused on, um, lack of specialist care locally. Um, and for people with disabilities, um, that includes speech and occupational and physical therapy as well as, um, having very long wait times for, um, getting an autism diagnosis. Jumping into transportation, um, in our area, um, over, uh, seventeen percent of commuters travel greater than one hour to get to work. Um, this is much higher, obviously, at the further east you go on Highway Two. Um, and this is, uh, as you can see in that table, um, significantly higher than in the county, state, and nation as well as the number of workers who travel, um, between thirty minutes and sixty minutes. Um, across all of our focus groups, um, transportation was a major topic. Um, traffic was a major concern and a barrier to employment and accessing basic needs. Um, very few people in the survey reported actually using public transportation. And, um, some of the data that we were looking at from the, uh, Sky Comish Valley Transportation Action Plan showed that, um, the majority of people in our area do not use public transportation because it doesn't actually take them where they want it to go, um, that it takes way too long relative to driving and that it doesn't have very convenient stops or serve their area. However, there's still twenty-three percent of Sky Valley residents who experience, uh, moderate to high transportation insecurity. Um, and this rate is much higher among people with disabilities, people who are low-income, Hispanic Latino respondents, or BIPOC respondents as well. Um, people in the key informant interviews, um, also echoed this by saying public transportation is not accessible enough. Um, and, um, also a key concern in some of the focus groups was, um, traffic safety, especially among, um, seniors and youth. Um, they felt that the traffic safety or walking around was not very safe. Looking at childcare, um, eighty percent of Snohomish County residents live in what is considered an extreme childcare desert. And Washington State overall ranks third in the nation for least affordable infant care in a family childcare setting. To put that into an example, one infant in a center would consume, uh, over half of the median income for a single mother. Uh, for two children in childcare, um, that is looking at, um, about thirty percent of the area median income for our area, just to put two children into childcare. Um, in our Sky Valley area, um, over half of children under age six live in households where all parents are working. And, um, we have, uh, twenty-four licensed facilities, um, sixteen of which are in, in-home programs and eight nurture childcare centers. Um, there are two Head Start programs in the Sky Valley area, which is a lower rate overall than in the county, state, and nation relative to population. In the survey, um, and the focus groups, um, there were, um, uh, eighteen percent of respondents said that they needed childcare and had difficulty finding it in our area. Um, not surprisingly, women were more likely to report this as well as the, uh, Hispanic Latino respondents were reported having more difficulty. Some of the most needed care, um, the top responses were for after-school care, toddler care, and for preschool. Um, and eighty-five percent of people said that the top barrier was that it was too expensive. Um, in our focus groups, the Hispanic Latino group also said that there was a lack of culturally sensitive options or Spanish-speaking options for their children. And finally, we're looking at food and nutrition as a topic. Um, food insecurity in Snohomish County is about nine point seven percent of the population. Uh, thirteen percent of children live in food insecure families. Um, about half of food insecure residents are ineligible to, for nutrition assistance due to income limitations. So a lot of people here, um, are past the federal cutoff, um, for that nutrition assistance. The use rate for the basic food assistance program in Snohomish County overall is about at eleven percent. And in the, um, table that you can see on the right, it shows the different use rates among the different cities in Sky Valley with a lower use rate in Monroe at ten percent, but a much higher use rate in Gold Bar and Index at eighteen and twenty-five percent. Um, among the, um, three school districts and the fourteen schools that make up the Sky Valley area, all but three schools have more than thirty percent of students who qualify for free or reduced-priced lunches. Um, this can be as high as seventy percent in some of the schools, including Frank Wagner Elementary. Thirty percent of student, of survey responses said that they sometimes or often struggle to pay for food. Um, and in some of our interviews and focus groups, it was clear that there was a concern about funding for the, um, local food programs, especially for the Sky Valley Food Bank, um, with there being, um, some federal funding cuts that were impacting them. Um, residents were also mentioning a lack of, um, certain dietary options or culturally sensitive options at the food bank. Looking at, um, two-one-one data, um, some of the top requests, um, when calling for two-one-one, which is the basic number that you call when you need assistance. Um, the top, uh, of the requests is for housing and shelter, mostly for low-cost housing and, um, a high percentage of rental assistance requests. Um, most of those, um, were unmet or meaning that they, um, had, did not have an adequate resource to, um, direct the caller to. Uh, fourteen percent of the calls were for utilities, most of those being electricity. Um, eleven percent for government or legal assistance, uh, six percent for food. And then the other, um, highest requests were just for, um, contact information, where to go to donate things, um, where people can go volunteer. Um, according to the survey and our focus groups, um, there was a low, uh, a need for low-cost legal services was a large barrier for people, um, especially for those who can speak Spanish. Um, there were twenty-six percent of people said that they sometimes or often struggle to pay for electricity. Um, with that, only seventeen percent actually applied for assistance with, um, phone or internet services. And six percent, um, said that they do not have reliable internet or telephone service where they live. So looking at all of that data that we went through, um, very quickly, um, the, in the report, we, um, kind of gathered and looked at, um, a way, a best way to kind of look at these needs and, um, uh, evaluate them and come up with the top recommendations. Um, and this, um, matrix that you can see on the right looked at, um, the frequency of mention across the data collection. So it says like, how often did it come up in the survey? Um, how often was it talked about in the qualitative data collection? Uh, the severity and impact of need, which reflects the number of residents, um, that responded with that need, uh, the critical nature of the service or ones that were severely lacking compared to, uh, the surrounding areas. And then gaps and barriers, um, to accessing services. So this reflects, um, responses that were disproportionately, um, uh, disproportionately, um, seen among vulnerable groups um, or had other accessibility concerns. disproportionately seen among vulnerable groups or had other accessibility concerns. So with that, the report goes into some key recommendations, which the broad categories that we'll go through very quickly are to support programs that encourage affordable housing production, housing stability, and emergency housing. Two, to compare, to improve the continuum of care for behavioral health and substance use disorder services. So especially ones that are rapid-response services, increase access to care, and that decrease recidivism. Increase access to medical, dental, and nutrition services, especially for finding sustainable funding sources, and also increasing access to medical services. Improving regional transportation services and traffic safety. A lot of this is related to policy advocacy, as well as partnering with other agencies to pilot certain programs, like the micro-transit that the community transit is considering. Expanding access to affordable childcare and after-school programs. Provide more educational and vocational training opportunities and low-cost legal services. And to advocate for a drop-in center that would help provide basic needs, housing navigation, and pop-up services to the community. That would conclude my presentation. I know that was a lot of information. Does anyone have any questions for me at this time?
Check. There we go. Is this? Oh, now this is working. I'll say that again, though, on the record. This is our first meeting in chambers, so welcome everyone to chambers. But we are still getting familiar with the system, so we are operating on a shared mic system. So please be patient as we pass the mic around.
Thank you. I have two questions. The first one, this type of survey was done about five years ago? What's the major difference between, conclusions-wise, between that survey and now? What has changed?
I would say that many of the findings were very similar, but that housing has kind of emerged as more of the top concern. That one was high across all of the data collection. I think in years prior, I can't recall if housing was the number one, but it was within the top three. Mental health and substance use were the other two that were consistently in the top three concerns. I would say those top three are all still near the top of all of the concerns as well. Some of the key positive changes that have happened since that needs assessment is that there are more services for medical-assisted treatment and outpatient services. And there are more services in the area now for mental health. The city has, so the city has prioritized our mobile mental health co-responder program that's helping to kind of provide that very quick response, along with first responders for mental health needs, as well as having a few more services in town that kind of help provide both with the behavioral health and substance use co-occurring together.
So if I understand you correctly, pretty much the major concerns is the same as five years ago? And that since that time, additional resources have been brought into the community to address some of those concerns, but never fully addressing them. Is that?
Yes.
Fair?
Yeah.
The county also does this type of survey every three years. They have to. What's the difference between the conclusions of their most recent survey and this survey?
The county?
Yes.
So the county did their most recent survey in 2022, which was just after. And I believe, I looked at this just recently, so I might get these wrong, but a lot of the recommendations are very, and the concerns are very similar. Some of their top concerns were housing and homelessness, food insecurity, access to, to medical care. What were some of the other ones? I can't think of them at the moment, but I know that there was a lot of crossover and similarity to what they were seeing from the 2022 assessment. And I know right now they're working on the, the most recent update.
Yeah, they have to do it every three years.
Yeah.
Will they be doing some focus groups in East County? They have done that in the past.
I don't have any information on that at the moment, but if, you know, if there's interest, I, I definitely can.
I would suggest that you advocate for that, just to get that kind of information in front of the county. And this is another, it's how old already? It's happy year old, it's a happy year old. And by the time they get around to doing that focus group, it's going to be year old. It'd be nice to get fresh information.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Comments slash question? As Tony said, this information is already over a half a year old. And so what does the city in particular do to kind of keep tabs on some of the changing information? Even like the police surveys, this is happening every five years. But like, at the federal and state level, you know, the budget changes, insurance changes, access to food and the need for food changes. Our local food bank, which serves about four hundred families every week, just reported two weeks ago that they served an extra fifty-nine. And as we all know, that may change drastically in more of the next coming weeks. So what does the city do between surveys to make sure that not only are we still active, but as most of the data information that is in the data may be the bigger priority than what this is saying right now?
Yeah, thank you. I think that the city's efforts to have a lot of these programs continually evaluated for effectiveness, the ones that we do have, our peer support outreach, case management, our mental health co-response programs. They're often out in the community with people directly and kind of have a finger on the pulse of some of the, the greatest needs in our community and can help inform that, as well as having our Community Human Services Advisory Board that meets regularly and is involved in all of these policy decisions and recommendations to city council, which is very important. A lot of the people who are on that board either have direct lived experience or are working directly with the populations that are concerned with human services. So that's definitely helping to keep, kind of like I was saying, a finger on the pulse of, of what's really happening. But continuous, continuous improvement in some of these programs from the recommendations are going to go through kind of a process of creating a, a, what is the word? A strategic plan for the next five years. That will go through the process of being developed through city staff, as well as the Human Services Advisory Board, that will kind of help guide those programs. And then having metrics along the way that are being gathered from the programs that we are involved in to continually make sure that they're effective and that we are really advocating for the continuation of these programs and trying to bring in more great grant funding. And that's a big part of this assessment as well, is that it's going to be a tool for trying to showcase what our needs are specifically to be able to bring in more grant funding and advocate with the, the state for more programs and funding as well.
Check, check. Okay, so this is a lot of really good information, and I think you answered some of this. But the strategic plan then is how we're going to continue to address these needs and like, try to get to the goal of, you know, seeing, like you said, metrics so that we can say, oh, five years from now, less people are reporting being extremely houseburdened and stuff. And so is that something that the city already, like your, your, like your role at the city, is that who's going to be in charge of making sure we do these every five years?
Primarily staff contact is going to be to Rachel for that. It's less of my role at the city and more, mine was kind of the more data collection and, and metrics piece of that. But the key staff at the city was going to be Rachel, Human Services Coordinator.
Cool. So everyone now is, it's almost like the Imagine Monroe idea. Like if we know, if everybody in all these different commissions and councils and staff know these problems, then it'll be more likely that we think of these when we're thinking of solutions for things.
Yes.
Cool. All right. Thank you.
Hi. Okay, kind of disheartening, kind of made me kind of sad. Eighth graders, suicide? Yeah. Twelfth graders? Just because I know somebody, but I'm thinking, you have an outreach program for that. How are we going to address that? Because I noticed on here, it said hi for the mental all the way across. So how, I mean, how is our community going to go up to the high school or to the middle school to help with that, or to help an eighth grader that's having an issue? Are they, I mean, I've worked for the school district for a long time, but I, I think they might need more programs because there's a lot more going on in our world?
Yeah, so there's very great work and wonderful work being done by the Monroe Community Coalition, which they're, they're kind of overseen by the school district, but they're a grant-funded program to be able to offer programs in school for learning about prevention and mental health promotion. There, and there's, Rachel and I both routinely go to those meetings and are a part of that coalition effort. It's a great opportunity for more members of the public to come in and partner in this effort. They partner with not only people from the city, but the Police Department and other community organizations. YMCA Take the Next Step. And it's a great opportunity for people to try and partner in the effort to better the outcomes among students. I know that they have a lot of programs that they have to continually kind of show the progress and, and what metrics that they're tracking in order to ensure the success of that. Joe at the, at the Community Coalition does an excellent job of tracking all of that information and putting out their strategic plans and going off of the Healthy Youth Survey data. In part, this, this report, a lot of the information came from some of their reports that they have put out as well. And he's been an excellent partner for that. Yeah, it's, it's definitely been a top concern. And it is, Tony was asking about the, the, the county as well. It's, it's kind of a top concern across the board and was also among the top three concerns in the first needs assessment as well. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. While that is a, an area of their focus and concern, like I said, this, because this presentation has to be kind of fast, I'm more kind of focused on really the, the negative and the, and the largest findings. Truthfully, overall, a lot of the metrics at the school dealing with mental health outcomes and substance use are very positive. And in fact, in the Monroe area is performing very well on a lot of measures of the Healthy Youth Survey. This specific presentation just mostly kind of want to highlight some of the few key things that are major concerns. But definitely, there's been a lot of like, positive impact as well that the coalition has had. Yeah.
Bob, are you wanting, ooh, that one is working. Are you wanting to work or are you talk?
Thank you, Hannah. Household with only children. That is probably self-explanatory, but it's alarming.
I'm sorry, I missed the first part. What?
Households with only children.
With only children?
Does that mean it's a household with just minor children?
Which one, which slider you were to?
When it went through the housing stock, housing data? Right there in the graphic, go to the right.
Oh, in that one, yes. Yeah, so that, this is countywide. So this isn't just specific to the Sky Valley area. But yes, there were seventeen households with only children that were experiencing homelessness.
I'm interested in also the, the anxiety and the mental health data. Is there a possibility, a way to correlate the mental health and anxiety with the other food insecurity, housing issues? Is that the driver for the anxiety, or is it something that we didn't survey?
I think it's, it's hard to kind of know, you know, in what order. There, there are often things that are found together. I know as a part of the report, there was a section where we were talking about food insecurity that was looking at the, and this is not in the slides, but it's in the full report, that looked at the students who are performing not as well in school. So it looked at the math and English language arts below-grade level knowledge. And it was much higher among students who had, who were experiencing homelessness, who were not native English speakers, who are, let me look exactly, all of the categories there were. But basically, all of those concerns, it was the rate for being below-grade level knowledge in, in those, in those subjects were much higher among groups like that. And a lot of, a lot of different metrics are going to be seen higher in, in people who are experiencing homelessness or low income as well. I'm not sure if that quite answers your question, but there are certain metrics for sure that are much higher among people who are low income or have other needs. So the ones that I, yeah, in terms of the student drug use, that, that tends to be sometimes a caveat with the Healthy Youth Survey is that even though it's anonymous and, and people are encouraged to be as, as open as they possibly can about everything like that, you, you know, it's, it's not always going to be a hundred percent accurate that students will accurately represent their, the drug use there as well. So while it is encouraging that those percentages and rates are going down, and what we experience here in Monroe is performing far better than surrounding regions and even the state as a whole. You know, I would argue that any percentage of drug use among youth is, is concerning and something to be concerned about. So definitely, it's still up there in the concerns and something that the coalition is very focused on.
Tony?
Thank you. First, I'd like to echo what you just said about the coalition, how well they are doing and working in the high school. Monroe many times, because of the coalition, lead school districts in addressing mental health and drug use among teenagers. But, you know, you have to sometimes draw lines at different pieces of this research. But you also talk a lack of professionals. But you also talk a lack of professionals addressing mental health in our community. As a former foster parent, looking for mental health services for my teenagers was almost impossible to find. So when you think about it, and think about, one, pandemic that we just went through. And one, impact that had on kids. But the other thing is, we're talking about kids. They don't have the skills we have to deal, how it is for us. And theoretically, I have some skills theoretically to address those challenges of depression and stress. We're talking about middle schoolers, teenagers who do not have those skills. And we, and we put more stress on them, making sure that, hey, what college are you going to go to when you graduate? All those things that, what is your sexuality, discovering that and that stress. Anyway, just wanted to echo again, the excellent job that the coalition is doing at the high school.
Carla?
Hi. My question is about, on the unemployment or the pie on that. Okay, so you have the, the orange that says not employed, not looking for work. Oh wait, I think I just answered my own question. And then employed, looking, I missed the not. I answered my own question there. I was trying to figure out what the difference were on those two, but now I see it.
Yeah, yeah. The unemployment, so unemployment rates would be similar to that question, unemployed, looking for work.
Right.
The labor force participation rate, however, is going to exclude people who are not looking for work. And, and a lot of those answers, you know, the, the next question following this on the survey was like, you know, why? If you answered this, what was your reason? And a lot of people were mostly saying like family responsibilities or disabilities for reasons for not looking for work.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No. Thank you so much for this presentation. I struggled through it because this is hard information to swallow. No matter how in line or whatever we are with anywhere else, the, these are tough statistics to swallow. And so thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the information and the continued work on this from a mom whose kids have been impacted by some of this and who, you know, sees families around who are continually impacted by any topic on here. And so just thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business, Agenda Item 5.1, Critical Areas Regulations Updates. Kate is going to be talking to us about this.
Thank you. All right. So this evening, I have included in your packet, a, I had an aha, actually, after our last meeting. Kelsey had asked the question, well, what is, how was that going to work? Because I had done the draft edits in a kind of a spreadsheet. And I'm like, oh my goodness, I should be showing you all what it looks like in the code. So I have decided to completely revamp it and then I'll be using a table to explain the changes that are occurring. So that will be put together as we move forward. So that's just kind of a big overall of what is in your packet. I'm not going to cover the items that we talked about at our last meeting. But if you have more questions for me now that you've seen it in this different format, please send me an email or we can discuss it this evening. Okay, next slide. So tonight, I've already covered the format situation. The two, the three topics I wanted to just briefly go over in our packets are the frequently flooded areas. This has been in Monroe's code. Since we've had a critical areas, typically, we just reference the flood hazard criteria and regulations. I wanted to expand on this a little bit more, explaining why it's important. And so in your packet on page, it begins on page fifty-eight. I just decided that it would be helpful to explain what the purpose and description are, what the designations are. There are not, there are no changes to the regulations, but just kind of trying to provide more information of why are we doing this? Our floodplain regulations are in Title fourteen. That is not changed either. The city of Monroe actually just updated that recently. So this is just more informational. Oh, I'm sorry. So it's just providing some clarification for the reader who's looking only in our codes. The rules themselves are not changing. Next slide. Okay, the critical aquifers, I think I've mentioned this a couple of times. We typically have said we do not have critical aquifers that we need to take care of. But part of my due diligence has been looking on all of these Department of Health, the Snohomish County PDS critical areas. And when I was on the health webpage, I actually found we do have some wellhead protection areas. So this slide is just talking about the, the things that we need to be looking at. Most of it has to do with potable water or drinking water. There's a sole source, which there are none in Monroe. There's wellhead protection areas. We have two, three, Class B, so they're smaller. Class A would be like a city water source. We do not have any of those either. And then we also have, what I'm introducing as well is this concept of moderately or high, high vulnerable or susceptible, susceptibility for aquifer recharge areas. So that's kind of your downstream. It's impacting water sources for others. Next slide. So the graphics are just kind of explaining that whole, I'm sorry, go back Hannah. The first one is just explaining the whole process of the, you've got rain that comes down. It goes into the aquifer. It goes to the water. It evaporates and it's a cyclical process. The bottom one is talking about the water table where you have surface water and how that, where wellheads go into the aquifer in the ground. And so just, I'm starting to just start educating you. I will be including a lot of this documentation when I send it to the Department of Commerce for the sixty day review because everything has to be based on best available science. We have not hired a consultant, so I'll be using primarily what the state has done through all of their research and peer review. So the graphic on the left are the wellhead protection areas. The ones in Monroe are, Bob Bacon has property off of Chain Lake Road. There are thirteen properties, I believe, that currently pull water from that. There's one that's south of the Department of Corrections. And I'm trying to remember that, the one that's kind of closer to the north, or excuse me, that's further east. That's actually outside the city limits. So with that, there are specific regulations to protect that. And so, or protect the area around it. So on page fifty-nine and sixty in your packets, it starts talking about, number one, identifying what are the critical aquifer areas within the city of Monroe. And then the new, this is all brand new. The next section talks about what are permitted uses. So typically, these are activities where you have a residence or a commercial entity that is already connected to sewer, so they're not discharging or pulling water. Section E talks about prohibited uses. I will be building upon this. There are a couple additional tables where they talk about chemicals that you don't want and it's associated with different type of businesses. So that will be coming. This is just kind of getting it started. And then the graphic on the right talks about the soils that are high, highly susceptible. And unfortunately, that's pretty much all of Monroe. So that will also be looking at, again, we don't want things being discharged into the ground. Looking at particular chemicals that are being used by different companies and making sure that they're not in areas that are highly susceptible or vulnerable. Next slide. All right, the geologically hazard, there's not going to be a whole lot of change in this section. However, I did want to provide, we have a couple erosion hazards. We've always identified landslide hazards. We, we have always identified. Next slide. The ones that, and seismic, those have always been included in Monroe's regulations. But there are two others that may or may not be impacted in Monroe, and those are the bottom two maps. The one on the left is the tsunami risk. Monroe should not have that. But I'm just acknowledging that, you know, you have the potential. The other one is the volcanic risk. For Snohomish County, that's Mount Peak. Again, Monroe should not be impacted that. You could have a seismic reaction, but the way the maps have indicated are the Lahars and the area of influence is actually further north and headed towards like, it's Stanwood. So I'm just acknowledging that in these regulations. I'm also building on the erosion hazards, including a little bit more information of what that means. Steep slopes, different types of soils that would be susceptible. And then we're also adding in the channel migration zones, so that's really talking about the Skye Comish. Because that does have an ability to erode the shoreline. I still can't believe how much Alborland Park has changed. It's disappeared since I was here in two thousand. Again, in this section, there's really not a lot of change. The only other one I did want to also highlight, and this is the map on the top right. Most of Monroe's soils, we have high susceptibility to liquefactions. That means the ground is shaking a lot and that has, creates a lot of property damage. So I did want to acknowledge that as well. Typically, when things are built, your, your geotech, your underground work has to be a little bit more substantial to account for that. And then, that's really the biggest changes that I want, this is the new stuff. The other part that I just wanted to walk through kind of where I'm at right now. The other sections that are in red are the topics that we have already discussed at our last meeting. The areas in gray or the gray highlight I am working through right now. So if you have questions, I might capture it as I'm looking for, through my resources. And then the areas that don't, are not highlighted in gray or are not edited, we should be good to go. There has not been a change in the, the regulations or the requirements for the city of Monroe. So tonight is a very fast and brief update, but we're moving through. I just, I have Lance in my head tonight, so this one to me is, I'm building that car as it's driving. You know, instead of that, taking the time to, to prepare everything for your review. So hang tight, ask questions. If you see something that doesn't make sense to you, please let me know.
Carla?
See if I'm, I'm still working. Actually, I think this applies to last time. So having with the wetlands and the buffers. And I know one of the questions we had asked before, which I see that the addition of C kind of addresses that, how we're not trying to hinder a homeowner or make it to their property. I thought that was great. But I have a question, that if there are a homeowner or a business owner that has wetlands and stuff on their property and something happens, not that they caused, natural disaster or just regular environmental changes, are they still required to fix that? Back to its original?
Okay, so I'm going to see if I can paraphrase what you're asking. If there is an existing residence or commercial development in an area that had a critical area and there is some type of a natural disaster that would cause the critical area to change. So, so any of those instances falls under our legal non-conforming requirements, which are in this code and I have not gotten through yet. It's at the beginning of the section where it talks about the exemptions. There's legal non-conforming, there's exemptions, exceptions. And so generally, the answer is the property owner will not be required to do something else because they were already there. They didn't, we already approved it. And if you remember when Leanne was doing some, both Leanne and Amy, when they were doing their code amendment work for accessory dwelling units, there's even the allowance to do some minimal expansion of properties that are already in critical areas. But if something happens to make the critical area change, that property owner is not going to be held accountable. They're already there.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? All right. Thank you, Kate. Appreciate the continued updates.
Yeah, so the next few things, just to finish out, I will continue reminding you. We've got the growth management planning goals and it's a balancing act. The critical areas versus trying to protect private property rights versus adding housing. So this slide you'll, I will be including in all the presentations. And then just at your next meeting, we're going to be tackling the biggest change. And that is the priority habitat requirements and stream changes that the Department of Fish and Wildlife are recommending. They're significantly different than how we regulate streams today. So that's, put on your thinking caps. And then I'll also be coming back with the vocabulary, with the citations of where the definitions came from.
Alrighty. Moving on to Agenda Item six point two, does the Downtown Monroe Tour of Opportunities. Do we have Patrick?
So this, I'm sorry, the flyer was just for your information. There wasn't a presentation.
Oh, sorry.
It's, yeah, it's an invitation. There will be a tour of opportunities. And the question for us was if you are thinking you're available and you're interested, we just need to know so we can notify that we might have a quorum of planning commission. So Tony, Randy, anyone else? Bob? I'll go ahead and make sure that we've got it noticed properly.
Sorry, it sounds like you're going to have a quorum, so probably just letting everyone know.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, trying to get back to my. Agenda. Agenda Item six point three is the monthly update. Hannah?
Is my mic on? All right, cool. How are we doing, Commissioner? All right, we have the monthly report for September. Starting with our pre-applications, we have three pre-application meetings in the month of September. One was a proposal to add two fourplexes to a current multifamily property on North Sam Street. The second was for Sharina Beans to convert a retail space into a coffee shop bakery. So this is the Black Barrel Vintage there on Main Street, the, that former space. And the third is for a proposed twenty-five hundred square foot dental clinic. This is on the property where the Ruth's Realty and the Mail Stop is currently, it's currently for sale. There on Old Owen Road. Our project highlight was the City Hall remodel. It has been a long time coming. It began with site plan review in April of twenty twenty-three. The first building permit application followed in June of twenty twenty-three with approved building permits being issued in that September. There were lots of deferred submittals following for building work, including the civils, mechanical plumbing permits, fire alarm sprinklers and sign permits. Overall, the building turned out beautiful and we're happy with the finished product. Except for the AV in the council chambers tonight. Keep that between us. Moving on to our project page, there have been a few updates. The Henriquez preliminary short plot, that has now been approved as of like last week. So that's exciting. That's been in the process for a while now. Under site plan review, we have a couple new projects. I realized we didn't add the addresses for those. So one is for Mean Bean Coffee Stand. This is the vacant lot that's there on Ferry Street or Ferry Avenue. Someone's proposing to put in a drive-through coffee stand. And the other is for Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue Station thirty-two. This would be a new fire station on a vacant lot. We brought you the pre-application meeting for that. That's the one there on Oak Street behind Coastal. Tony?
Thank you. Will they have to update Oak Street to?
So that's actually a separate project that I believe is going to council possibly tomorrow night. The Public Works Department has that on their project list. The fire district's building, though, they will be required to dedicate right of way to, as part of their development, as part of the piece of the puzzle for that project. But Oak Street is slated for improvement. I cannot remember the timing. as part of the piece of the puzzle for that project. But Oak Street is slated for improvement. I cannot remember the timing. I want to say yes. I mean, I'll have to double check. I will get back to you, Tony, because I feel like there's something on tomorrow night's council agenda.
Another new project that isn't so new is the Seiya cabins under reasonable use. This may be familiar to you because this is now the second time this project has come in. These are, it's a proposal for reasonable use for short-term rental cabins within a critical areas buffer. Their previous application had expired without a resubmital, so they have come back in with that project. And under development agreement, you will notice that the PUD development agreement, the file is now closed and the application has been withdrawn for PUD at the airport. So I'm guessing there's going to be questions for that.
I was just gonna say, what, what's the story that we can know?
What it came down to, well, honestly, I'm a little surprised it happened because they were really close, the city and the applicants were really close to being ready to go to city council. It is our understanding that risk was a really big piece of it for the PUD. What they had been asking for was to freeze our development regulations for five years because that's the time, they didn't expect to need the new facility for that timeline. And there was just too much risk involved. So they are now looking for a new piece of land.
Brandy?
So I requested Amy reach out to them in the last week. They are also withdrawing that application. There's no need for the conference of plan amendment changes if they are not going to be closing the airport. And the PUD, it's my understanding, the way it was set up is the property owner was actually going to have to close the airport. It was not going to be the PUD. So that could have also played into a portion of why the PUD walked away.
So does that mean that the, did the PUD finalize the sale of the land?
No.
No, so the original airport owner or the, it's still the owner? Okay.
Correct.
Bob?
So the airport's staying for now? Until the, the owner wants to get rid of it?
Yeah.
Mary, did you have a question?
So is the PUD just planning on staying where they're at? Or do they have an idea where they're going?
I don't know. I, I, I know that this project was necessary because they were hoping to consolidate. I thought it was three different facilities, which is what they had done up in Arlington. So it means that they're looking for another property to accomplish what they were going to do at the airport.
So I wonder if that'll be in Monroe or out of Monroe then. That'd be interesting because then jobs, I'm just thinking of jobs.
Yeah.
Wise.
Yeah. I don't know.
Thanks.
Go ahead and continue, Hannah.
All right. Thanks, guys. Right, moving on to the building section. Here's our permit charts for the month. For the building team, they're continuing, this was in September, continuing to work with the contractors and the city's project team to go through the temporary certificate of occupancy items for city hall. I believe we are all wrapped up with the TCO at this point. So I think we have our formal certificate of occupancy for city hall. And this one is exciting. We were able to work with the Monroe Christian School to get final occupancy of their off-site classroom before the start of the school year. This included multiple site visits before plans were submitted and accessible upgrades to a previous residence building, office building. And we've got several big projects going on like Wendy's and the ongoing replacement of plumbing at Monroe Reformatory. So building department is staying busy. And also our building inspector was out for the entire month of October. So our building department's been very busy. Xiao has been doing inspections. Code enforcement cases, it's pretty in line with the last month, and it's just continuing education on non-commercial speech signage, those election signs and the permitting process for those.
I have a question on that. So can we go back to those resolved numbers for the so it usually makes sense to me about, okay, new cases, and then they can resolve more than the new ones because they're resolving some old ones. But this now, like by looking at this whole year, it seems like how are they resolving that many when there's not that many new ones? You know what I'm saying? Like, if they resolved twenty-five in June, plus twenty almost in May, and I mean, that means that the ones that weren't, that are from last year, there was literally so many unresolved that they're resolving like twice, two to three times as many a month. I just, I thought at one point it made, the numbers did used to make sense, but now I'm feeling like there's just what all goes into resolutions, I guess, the resolved ones. Could there be more resolved than new, new ones for some reason that I'm not understanding?
We, I, I will reach out to our code enforcement officer to understand how the, these numbers are put together because I honestly cannot answer that for you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Keep going.
All right. And here are the new business licenses. Anyone have questions on those? And moving down under comp plan updates, there hasn't been changes to that. Besides the PUD application, that is going to be withdrawn shortly. I don't think there's any updates to the code amendments. The only one is the local permitting, it's not reflected in September, but the council did adopt that. And then the interim R seven zoning has lapsed. And so we're actually working on a fix because the intent was to allow that, this is the one that allows townhomes and the R seven. The intent was to keep that as an interim regulation until the city finalized the formal adoption. So that's actually going back to the city council at their meeting. There's only one meeting in November, so it'll be at that meeting to reinstate that. And then under annexations, the only update is just that the Connerick annexation has gone through and been approved by the boundary review board.
It's adopted.
It's adopted. It's, yeah, so awesome. Even better.
Yay.
Woohoo. Thank you, Hannah. Are there any other questions or comments from staff there? Otherwise, we can go move on to general comments and discussions from commissioners. We can start down with Mary. Bob, do you want to hand the mic down?
I'm excited to be here tonight in the new building. It's really a great addition to this part of town. Another thing, I'm excited for Randy Blair down there. Congratulations. I loved seeing your profile.
My new hair.
Yes, tonight, yes. And I'm also excited about the new, it's called the new, I think, tea, the little boutique in town down upstairs. If you haven't been there, go up there. It's upstairs from the museum, the old city hall. It's something new for that part of downtown and where instead of, you know, I'm glad that they're going upwards the highway. So yeah, there you go. Thank you.
I, too, like, congratulations. I was, I went to the post office. And when you go out to parking lot, and I want to go over to wall to go across or whatever, yeah. And so I went to the back, the back road, I don't know what you call it, an alley behind the post office, and it looked terrible. There's derelict cars, there's trash, there's things that I think have been there since nineteen thirty. And so I said, well, let's, let's, let's reach out to someone. And I used the website, and the website has that feature where you make a request, a compliment or complaint. And I went on there and I I didn't use my city email, I used my personal email, and I just mentioned that somebody needs to go out and take a look at that, see if they can't clean it up. Two days later, I got a response from Macy. Look at he split on the spot. She's gone down, she went down and took pictures of all the trouble spots. She notified the residents there. She'll go back and give them, she'll give them some time to clean up their act and then, and then she'll go back and if it doesn't get rectified, she'll go to court enforcement. So kudos and add a girl to Macy. Can someone get that to her, please?
Absolutely. Happily.
I know, well, I guess it is kind of nice being here and different, you know, we've got to get used to all of this, but it is nice. I think since our last meeting, I think Wendy's had opened since, I think it was since our last one, and it definitely gotten a great response. And I'm in that area quite a bit, and it seems like it's been regularly busy. So I think that's really good to see. But then I kind of had another question about across the street with the Starbucks, because they closed. Right? The, the brand new one that just got built?
Yes, so that Starbucks has closed. Starbucks has decided to end their agreement with that property. And the property owner is currently looking for another coffee company to move in there. I, I don't know who he's talking to.
So Starbucks didn't own the property?
Starbucks did not own the property.
But what about the building?
Yeah, they were just leasing the building.
Okay. Yeah, I was kind of wondering. And it was like, it was seemed like it kind of coincided with Wendy's. It was like that was happening and also all the signage was gone. And I was like, wait, what happened here? So anyway, it was kind of interesting. And then I also noticed on Main Street, so on Lewis, if you make a left on the left side, there, if I understand what I was seeing correctly, they were changing all the brick on in front of a couple of buildings. Right? On Main Street. So if you're going down Lewis and you make a left, a couple of the buildings changed all their brick fronts.
That's Mary's.
Yeah, your scaffolding.
Yeah, your, your building.
Isn't it great?
Yeah, no, I think it looks really good. Yeah, so I, at first I wasn't really sure. I drove by and I'm like, I wonder what they're doing. And I thought at first they were changing the windows. And then I, yes, and so then I came by and I had, oh, they change, it looks, it looks, it looks very nice.
Just so you know, that's the old brick. It's not the brick that we put up. It's the brick that was there. So it's old brick from nineteen, I don't know, thirty-one, nineteen hundreds. So we brought the building back to itself. Isn't it beautiful?
This old brick is good as new brick? Rather have old than new.
And that for me, thank you. Alrighty, I'll start passing that down, but I'll go ahead and make comments now. There's also another new business downtown that just had its grand opening over the weekend in the old Sky River Bakery Spot, which is a new crystal shop. It's Dragonfly. I think it's Dragonfly Crystals. Yeah, so it's a brand new, it just opened this weekend. So it's a new business to check out. And then also, it's been a bit since our last meeting, so I had the pleasure of being able to go down to where Woods Creek meets Skye Comish River, and I got to check out the the salmon, the humpies, the pink salmon down there that were in mating season. And so it's just really cool to go down there. It was very, very peaceful. It's smelly, but it's part of nature. And so it's just kind of neat. I hadn't actually done that before. And it reminded me of childhood because in fourth grade, my teacher was, it was her first year teaching, but her father owned and operated the hatchery in Chimacum, and I went to Chimacum Schools. So our fourth grade class actually did a whole year long of writing a salmon book for kids and by kids. And so in my group was the pink salmon group. So I was one of four who worked on the pink, so it's just kind of neat, little reminiscent of childhood for me. So, yeah, I think that's all for me tonight.
You did a wonderful job on that building. I appreciate the beauty of it and the historical restoration for that part of Main Street. You did an excellent job, and I thank you. And for myself, since July first, there's been construction in Circle Drive, Sam Street. And the staging area was right in front of my picture window. And I can see the end in sight. They pared the street for paving, and it cannot come any sooner. And when they're done, it's going to look beautiful. I mean, new waterline, new sewer lines, and they're going to rebuild the little city park that we have in our cul-de-sac. So.
Thanks. Besides reintroducing myself, I don't have anything else to add tonight. Besides, actually, you were doing a lot of work, Kate, on the all those changes that you're doing on, that you gave us tonight. So thank you a lot. And nothing else.
One more comment is that on Tuesday, it is election day, and there are local elections. So make sure that you fill out those ballots. It is recommended probably at this point to go ahead and drop that off at a drop box rather than putting it into the post office just in case there's a backlog. So we have a drop box right in front of our Monroe library. So get those ballots in before eight o'clock on Tuesday, November fourth. Yes, okay, my dates are correct. All right, Hannah?
My only item is, as was mentioned during the human services discussion, food banks are going to be hit really, really hard this November. Food stamp benefits are going to be cut off. So there's going to be a food drive here at city hall. So we have a bin. Perishable donations will be gladly accepted. Diapers and wipes will be accepted. There's a list of the hot ticket items. That's just above the bin. So be great if anyone could drop something off. That's all.
It would be dropped off here. Yeah. Yeah, we have one just in the city hall lobby.
Is that being posted online on socials?
It's going to be posted in a couple of days.
Awesome.
I do have a question on that. Can they drop off a check with the food bank?
Um, no, I'm not going to be collecting any money.
Okay.
But, but please donate money to the food bank.
There is a place online too, if that's easier for people to donate to the food bank. And I think there's probably similar for any nonprofit organization, just about any of the community, if people are feeling inclined to give during these times.
Absolutely.
Kate?
I just want to thank all of you for your patience this evening. And Hannah, you are a mastermind. I'm just so grateful for you running around to get the microphones. And to our audience online, thank you for your patience. We will absolutely get this figured out before our next meeting. The, I've been to a couple of council meetings. I know it works. So we'll just need to, a little bit more education. So thank you again for your patience this evening.
Yeah, I want to give a shout out to Susan Davis. She was actually giving me like live feedback of like, the mics aren't working, the mics aren't working. So thank you to our, our citizens for their feedback.
Yeah. And then the only other thing is on Friday, there will be a Halloween event here at city hall from three to five PM in the council chambers. All departments will be on hand if you have questions.
Question is if they're doing anything downtown, they are. It's also at three o'clock on Main Street, starts three to five. The chamber is putting that on. Is it from here? Is it three? Did you say three here?
At city hall, it's three to five.
Yeah, it's the same time, but down at Main Street. So you can hit here and then, and go down or vice versa.
There's also going to be trunk or treat at Galaxy Theaters. I can't remember what day.
That has already happened. That was this weekend.
Happened, oh.
Yeah, it was this weekend.
I hope it was awesome.
So if there are no further comments or questions and no objections, we shall adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.